I see 6:30. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would you please do roll call? Do a roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Cardenas?
Present.
Commissioner Sue?
Here.
Chair Chell?
Here, thank you. Okay, you wanna leave this in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I love that.
Chair, just for the, just for the clerk, Commissioner Douglas's absent.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna take this opportunity to introduce our new commissioner?
Yes, absolutely.
You may have it here, but...
I believe staff has a certificate.
It's under here.
For our...
Sworn in, disbarred.
Yes, for being sworn in.
Beautiful gold embossed sticker.
Well, you lucky girl.
So Chair, this is Commissioner Sue's first planning commission meeting with the city of Rolling Hills. She is a resident within our community and we welcome her to be a part of the commission. We have a very light agenda for her, so it really, just because it was your first night, I'm kidding, it just happened to work out that way. But we welcome her on our commission and we'll be here to support her throughout the process and as well as our commission who is well seasoned in planning.
Well, thank you for volunteering. The salaries are huge. The benefit program is incredible, so you're gonna love it. All right. Approved order of the agenda, I approve it. Blue folder items, are there any blue folder items?
Do we have any correspondence for any of the items on the planning commission meeting or agenda? No, sir.
Okay. Public comments on non-agenda items, I see none. Consent calendar, approved affidavit of posting for the planning commission regular meeting of January 21st, 2025. And 7B, approve the minutes for the December 17th, 2024 planning commission meeting.
I'd like to motion to approve items 7A and 7B. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
And we also have a certificate, Chair. I'm not sure if you wanna do this at this time for our outgoing...
Oh, that's farther down. Do you wanna do it now?
Oh.
I'm assuming you wanna sit here and listen to all of this, right? Before you get into that, I just have one request.
Sure.
You can leave the planning commission, but we need someone for the view and tree. Would you consider staying on for that? I'll take that as a no. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Good try.
Hey, listen, if it's not her, it's me.
And I do believe the certificate is in your...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Go through that, thank you. And if I may, Chair, if I can just read the certificate out as well?
Oh, please.
This is a commendation presented to Ms. Jana Cooley for the Rolling Hills Planning Commission. Ms. Cooley has served on the planning commission since November 2016 through January of 2025. It is with great pleasure that we commend you for your invaluable service to the citizens of Rolling Hills over the past eight years. You have exemplified the highest levels of integrity, professionalism, professionalism and public service. We appreciate your dedication, commitment and collaborative efforts with the residents, commission and city council, working to protect the mutual interest and helping make the city of Rolling Hills an even better place to live. And with this, Jeff Piper, our mayor, has signed and it is dated for today's date, January 21st of January 25. So, here it is. Would you like to say a few words?
You know, me, I've always needed to say a lot of words, right? I'm not really, I've always tried to be a few words, but I can't even imagine, I couldn't imagine what kind of experiences they have when Sean came up one day and I'm not going to worry. Can't believe it's eight years ago. I think so much has happened in that time. But I really enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to help this beautiful community stay as beautiful as it's been to be. And so, all of your hard work, you're such a great team and it's a pleasure to have you personally. And we've had some comings and goings of staff and one commissioner, but overall, it's just been a really great experience. You've got the good work.
Well, I wanna thank you on behalf of everybody up here. You've been an absolute joy to work with. Your, you know, your vision, your comments have made a difference and I just thank you for the time that you gave us. Can't believe you're leaving, but thank you for your commitment. It really was appreciated.
And I second that.
And you know, I said I'll be a fly. I'll be here knocking on doors.
Have you and tree committee. There's always an opening.
Anyway, thank you very much for this honor. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'd be remiss to ask Councilwoman Marsh if you wanted to say a few words.
I would just echo everything that you said. The mayor's done that. You have been really, really additive to the process and the whole planning commission is great. And I look forward to seeing good stuff coming to the council. Thank you. Enjoy your new life.
I'd be happy to know you can quit.
Pardon?
I said I'm just happy. To know you can quit.
We're taking notes.
Hey.
Maybe get a certificate on the way out. Well, thank you for everything. You have been just a blessing, so thank you. Okay. Excluded consent calendar items, I see none. Public hearings on items continued from the previous meeting, none. New public hearings, I have to recuse myself. This is for 15 Flying Main. Abby is not here, but she would've had to recuse herself as well, so I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman.
All right, 10A zoning case 24027. Get a summary, please.
All right, good evening, honorable planning commissioners. I'm here to present zoning case number 24-027, which is for the property located at 15 Flying Main Road. Let's see, the project, the property is zoned RES1 and the subject property is located on Flying Main Road on the south portion of the city, where the little star is. As you can see, the project is located far enough away from all of the adjacent neighbors, with the exception of the closest neighbor who is located south, the adjacent property, which is south right here. And the proximity from the proposed project to the closest neighbor south is 38 feet and 10 inches. And this project doesn't obstruct any of the views and any of the other adjacent neighbors, so it doesn't obstruct the views. The property is zoned RES1 and has a net lot area of 41,603 square feet. It is .95 acres, which is considered a non-conforming and smaller than most of the lots that are in the RES1. Most of the lots in the RES1 are a minimum lot size of one acre. The lot is developed with a 2,427 square foot single-family residence, 540 square foot attached garage, 79 square foot attached covered porches, 117 square foot trellis and there is a 442 square foot stable. And the house was originally built in 1954. On March 21st, 2024, the applicant submitted a variance application and architectural plans for discretionary approval before the planning commission for a portion of the residential addition to encroach into the side yard setback. The portion, which is 23 square feet, 23 square feet of the residential addition encroaches into the side setback by seven feet and six inches. And this requires a variance to encroach into the side yard setback. The remaining 725 square feet does comply with the development standards. And also, part of that will encroach into the addition is 12 square feet of the proposed residential stairs and 63 square feet of new hardscape. That also encroaches into the side setback. The variance is required because the rear of the lot is steeply sloped and the building pad area is limited due to the slope. The buildable area of the lot is restricted in the front because there's a septic tank and leach field, which are located in the front. The project also includes the residential addition, which is a total of 748 square feet, 33 square feet of stairs to the main residence and 89 square foot expansion to the existing front porch and 80 square feet of stairs that goes down to the stable. There's also a 266 square foot barbecue, which is included in the back patio area. And this is not part of the discretionary approval and this will be approved by staff ministerially. There is no grading required for the new, for the project or the new stairs. The project does comply with all of the development standards in the municipal code and the only exception is that the portion of the addition that encroaches into the 20-foot required side setback. Okay, let's see, here's the development table.
It's also included.
In your packets and as you can see, it's well below the 20% maximum, it's 11.6. That's gonna be the structural coverage. Flatwork is 7.28, which is still well below the 15% coverage. Total lot coverage and flatwork structural coverage is 18.5, which is well below the maximum 35%. Disturbed areas, no additional disturbance. The building pad coverage, which is a guideline, but with the addition, does bring the building pad coverage, existing is 32.38. It does bring it to 41.20, but that is just a guideline. Building pad two, with the new stairs, it does increase it up to 485 square feet, but it brings it to 19.95%, which is still below the 30% maximum guideline. Existing stable, it's 442 square feet. And I'm sorry if it's hard to see, I should've blown this up for you. This such, this, this is the, this is the, okay, so this right here is the property line. And then this line right here is the easement. And this line right here is the setback. So this little portion of the corner right here, that's the portion that encroaches into the side setback. Right there, little corner right there. This is an aerial photograph of the lot. Here's the, here's the main part of the lot and then, as you can see, it's steeply sloped. So this area is sloped and, you know, and buildable. So what they decided to do is extend this portion here and expand that out and that's the portion that will encroach in this little corner right here. That would be the section that would encroach into the side setback. Here's a photo of the actual staking of the site. Here's the proposed ridge line. The highest point of the roof will match the existing roof line. It's a better elevation. So this is the south elevation. This is the portion of where the proposed new addition is. And the windows are gonna be fixed. And this here matches this roof line here. Here's the proposed new stairs. This is the north front elevation. There's no changes to the west and then here's the east elevation. The project was noticed in the Daily Breeze on January 8th and in addition, all public hearing notices were sent to residents within a thousand-foot radius on January 8th as well. And as of date, we haven't received any public comments or concerns regarding the project. No emails or any correspondence or anything, any concerns. But at the field trip meeting this morning, Abby Douglas was a resident and she is at the adjacent property, which is south. She had some concerns regarding screening because her residence is, you know, adjacent and located directly south. Her bedroom faces the new addition and staff ensured her that we would be providing landscaping that would be fire resistant and will help screen the addition. This project is categorically exempt. It's been determined exempt pursuant to SEQA Section 15303, Class 3. New construction of, actually, I forgot that one. And so our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, discuss the project and Resolution 2025-01 has been provided if you decide to approve this project. Any questions? Ever staff, the applicants are here to answer questions as well.
I have two quick questions for you. There's another resident at the field trip this morning, but no, I didn't hear where they lived, but no...
Yeah, she was asking about the fire, if there's gonna be like, if there was...
But no, she didn't.
No, she didn't.
So many concerns. 2025-01, that has, was that written up today? Does it have the landscape screening?
No, it doesn't, but I can add that.
Okay, got it.
We can add that.
Okay, you good?
Just one about the other neighbor that was there. She raised a point about fires, so I was thinking, how, what is the distance like between, you know, if you have the new foliage that screens it to per house? Like how much access does the fire department has?
Five foot. They require, to my understanding, it's five feet. They require five-foot access around the parameter of the building.
Okay, great, so...
Yeah. And this will be reviewed. It's part of the review process, so it'll go, it'll get agency clearances and it'll have to be reviewed by the fire department.
Okay.
In addition to the association?
Yeah.
They kinda look at all, everything in the setback and the easements as their priority, particularly in the easements. So, I was gonna bring up the same thing, so good point, so. Okay, you good from here?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to open up the, to the public, so anybody who would like to comment, please state your name and your address if you would like to come up. If you, if you, if you'd like to come up and describe the project, you're welcome to. Name and address, please.
So my name is Jennifer King. I'm the designer for the project.
Sure. And... No.
My address is 2219 Carriage Drive, Rolling Hills Estates. And I've been working with my clients, Michelle and Tiffany, for about two years on this project. One of the things that we really wanted to do was to bring the house up to date. They are the second owners and one of the, we'd like to bring it up to date for a modern family where we have larger bedrooms and we are, at the moment, there are three bedrooms, right? And we're not, we're not adding a bedroom, we're making a bedroom larger and making that a master bedroom with a master suite. So, one of the things that we were very cognizant of was that we did not want to do anything that was out of scale or proportion to the building in itself. We wanted to keep within the, the style of the home. And one of the things on the elevations that you may have noticed was that there's a roof detail for the front of the home where you have stepped roof. And then the same thing is true for the back addition. I'm not sure if I'm describing it correctly, but where you have two roof lines right there and the same roof is repeated on the, on the back. One of the things that we just really wanted to do was to make the home more open and accommodating to the landscape. We also did not want to impinge on anything on the front of the home for one of the reasons, you know, besides the fact that, that there's a septic tank there and the accompanying leach field. We just thought that it was, that for sake of privacy, that it was more important to have the addition be on the back of the home instead of on the front, even though that there was no possible way anyways because of front yard clearances, et cetera. But that, we thought that it would be an enhancement to the side, the underutilized side yard that was there. And we do, we do realize that we do have a neighboring property, but most of the addition is faces into the garage and where there is existing landscape coverage that we wanted to supplement with similar plants to have more of a, of a privacy screening hedge so that neither neighbor would, you know, be able to hear or see each other. So, and then one of the other things that we wanted to do for the front of the project was to extend the porch so that there was more shelter from the wind and the rain that we had last year. Unfortunately, we do not have this here, but there was quite a bit of rain and so they realized that they needed to have more coverage for the shed roof that we want to have on the extension of the front porch. And then just the only other thing I could add is that, again, we just wanted to keep within the natural beauty of the home and the architectural style that was, that is evident. My clients are very interested in preserving the actual interior through what it was for the first designer and architect or owner and architect. And so we repeated the same motif of the windows and doors, be very consistent throughout.
Great. Any questions? Couple of questions real quick. Just wanted to make sure, I think I heard originally that the windows were fixed. I just wanted to double check they work as we are kinda close to the neighbor.
Yes, they are fixed.
So they're not operable?
No.
Okay.
The windows, especially that big, no, they're fixed.
And in addition, the, whatever the landscaping and/or patio or the ground cover is outside of the windows?
Yes.
It's not gonna, there's no intent to use that as a patio, meaning they're gonna sit there in a chair and noise?
Three or four feet at the most, just as a landing, required landing in front because it's really gonna be a pathway. Most of the patio area is gonna be already where there is an existing patio and it's to, it's to the left where, what it looks like a chimney, but is not. So that's the all, the whole patio area. And in fact, that, there's a block there, it's in front there, that that is the barbecue area. It is gonna be not covered and it...
And you did hear our concerns with the fire code and...
Yes.
It would be something, it's not under our purview, but obviously...
It's something that I've worked with the fire department on lots of other projects and I know that they actually now require fuel efficiency. Where this, when they talk about fuel, it's like the landscape burnable. They wanna make sure that everything is drought tolerant and fire safe. So, and I've done that before for...
And another thing we always are concerned with is retaining walls and there is that hillside right there with the rubble wall, as you described it.
Yes.
I get it, and a good way to describe it. And I know that was the subject on the other side, just because of the age of the home and how it built up and whatnot. So, concern, but it's under our purview in relation to just making sure it's, it's safe and sound.
Right.
But reality is the association's gonna really have those comments.
Right.
So just be prepared.
Be prepared, yeah.
I don't know what that has to do with the, what we approved tonight, but you're obviously gonna have to get that clear.
Right. And, you know, that's something that, that, you know, I know that I don't wanna have anything that's over three feet.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Thirty-one inches, right?
Pardon?
Thirty-one inches, three feet?
Height of the wall, or thirty-six?
It's thirty-six, height of the wall. There's thirty-six. If it's thirty-one, I'll keep it at that. I'll make sure.
Yeah, I think it's more the distance to that from the structure.
Oh, right, we definitely...
The five feet or whatever it was, but I don't know what that is.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all righty.
Anyone else out there like to comment? All good? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we'll discuss it ourselves.
Sure. I'll go, I'll go ahead and jump in first. In terms of the encroachment, it's minimal. I don't have really any challenges with that. It's symmetrical, the house. We discussed the issues brought up by the neighbors. Obviously, I think it's only four feet for fire access, but it's gotta have the fire access going around it, which will come with that plan. And then the screening for the neighbor, which the applicants have already agreed they'd be doing. So I'd be in favor of moving forward with the exception of adding in the landscape plan to address the screening issue.
Hey.
I'm good. I don't have anything.
Okay, I think you brought it all up. I was concerned with the, just the noise of the windows and granted, it is her across from the garage, but the master is right there too, hers. So, but I think we've addressed that and I think it, otherwise, I appreciate them keeping to the character of the house, which we all like to do, so.
And it's minimal.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a corner.
So, I'll propose that we adopt Resolution 2025-1
with the addition of the landscape condition added into it for screening of that area off of the corner that encroaches in setback.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cardenas?
Approve.
Commissioner Sue?
Approve.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Okay, resume your meeting. Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Now we invite our chair back to really close it out. Great job. Okay, I see old business, none. New business, none. Schedule of field trips, do we have any field trips next time?
We have two projects, but we're not too sure certain yet, but...
Let us know before the next one.
Yeah, we'll definitely let you know.
Okay, sounds good. Items from staff, can we just skip this one?
Knock on wood, we haven't...
I know, that's true, but...
Any challenges, so...
Okay, so I'm assuming Gianna was on the view and tree and you're looking for the next sucker victim. Would you not say that because we may have a volunteer here? Oh, I'm sorry. You are gonna love this position. Part of your pledge ship.
This is a hazing, right?
You get paid a little bit more.
Okay, so you're on it and you're on it, correct? Is that correct? Those are the other two on it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take the bullet and I'll step up.
Coming back to Trees and Views?
I'm not happy about it, but I don't see that I have any choice. Okay, do I need to do anything on that? Do we need to vote on it? I'm sure you guys will vote yes.
Does he need a second? What if we refuse?
Yeah, motion and a second.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to add Chair Shelf to the Trees and Views Committee in replacement of Commissioner Cooley.
A second and third.
Do you wanna do roll call? Do you wanna just do all in favor? What would you, all in favor?
All in favor.
Nay. Okay, thank you. Items from the planning commission, we took care of this already. So, anything else before I adjourn? Love it. Okay, before I adjourn, thank you very much for volunteering in your service.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no, really, it's, it's not a fun job sometimes, but it's, it's an important role and I thank you for stepping up, or we thank you for stepping up and volunteering to fill the vacancy.
And thanks for your guidance. I'm sorry I'm a bit green, hence, you know, or I would have volunteered for it.
So are we. All right. I am adjourning this meeting until the next meeting, Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 6:30 in City Hall chambers. We are done. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave this.
Thank you.
Thank you.